Now, I'd like to call this meeting to order. The clerk has advised that we do have quorum. Members, I propose that we dispense with the National Anthem in the moment of silence. The council has done this this morning. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Onishnabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat people, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. For the benefit of those who are connected to the internet, the city clerk has posted all of the agenda materials for today's meeting at toronto.ch/council. This meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting. Members of council, staff, and candidates, and the public are participating in today's meeting remotely and in person, and the meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. I'd like to welcome the candidates and other members of the public who are with us here today, who are watching the meeting online. This special meeting of council has been scheduled for the following purposes: to fill the vacancy in the office of councillor Ward One at Etobicoke North by considering and appointing a candidate to the office in accordance with the procedures adopted by City Council at its July 19 meeting, and to introduce and enact bylaw for the special meeting. Members of council, this is a special meeting under council procedures, and no other business item such as notices or motion may be introduced. This rule cannot be waived. Are there any declarations of interest? Are there any petitions at this time? We will not review and confirm the order paper. Once the order paper has been approved by council, any change will need a two-thirds vote. We have one item before us today. All those in favor of adopting the order paper, please raise your hands. In favor, opposed, if any, carried. Members, I will now ask the city clerk to explain the process for today's meeting.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, City Council has adopted procedures for this meeting. These procedures were summarized in my report, Item CC 49.1, on the Ward One appointment. Each of the candidates that have been deemed satisfactory, who have completed a consent of nominee and an acknowledgement of qualification, and provided personal identification that is deemed satisfactory, can address City Council for five minutes. Candidates may address City Council in person or by video conference. The speaking order for the candidates will be determined by a random draw. I will place the names of all candidates on equal-sized pieces of paper in a container and randomly draw the names. After each candidate has spoken, each member of council can ask the candidate one question. Members of council can speak if they wish once all candidates have spoken and all questions dealt with. After members of council have spoken, council will vote by ballot. I will review the balloting process at the appropriate time. Upon conclusion of the balloting, I will declare to be appointed the candidate receiving the votes of more than one-half of the number of members of council present and voting, or the candidate selected by law in the event that two remaining candidates are tied. At the end of today's special meeting, City Council will enact a bylaw to confirm the appointment of the successful candidate to the office of councillor Ward One at Etobicoke North for the remainder of the term of the present council. Members, Item CC 49.1 lists the members who have submitted nominations for councillor. The following persons have subsequently withdrawn their name from consideration. That is Rajesh Tawari.
Members, we have Item CC 49.1 before us. Councillor Holliday, you have a procedure motion on this matter. As the motion is lengthy, I will ask the clerkstaff to display it on the screen.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The following persons, who have signified in writing that they are legally qualified to hold the office of councillor and consented to accept the office, if they are appointed to fill the vacancy of councillor Ward One at Etobicoke North, shall be considered for appointment to fill such vacancy. Those names are displayed. Thank you.
All those in favor, show of hands. Opposed, if any, carried. Members, the city clerk will now draw the names of the candidates to determine a speaking And the clerkstaff will post the speaking order online at toronto.ch/council.
Madam Speaker, the first candidate is Charles Azud. The next candidate, Elliot Roberts. The next candidate, Rose Milchin. The next candidate, Ian McDonald. The next candidate, Patience Evbargaru. The next candidate, John Genzer. Followed by Michael Jackson. Followed by Dean Maher. Followed by Mo Jiwa. Followed by Walter Alvarez Bardales. Followed by Samuel Dresingham. Followed by Alistair Courtney. Followed by Devon Shu Narang. Followed by Denise Walcott. Followed by Kim King. Followed by Jacinta Konakaratnam. Followed by Alison Canning. Followed by Abram Abbey. And Madam Speaker, the last candidate to address council today, Christopher Noor. Madam Speaker, that is the order of candidates this afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Sophie, you can now call the first candidate to come forward.
The first candidate is Charles Azud.
Okay. Would you like to come forward?
Good to see you all again.
Thank you. So you have five minutes.
Members of council, Mayor Torrey, Speaker Nunezada, and city staff, I'm a resident of Etobicoke North and a healthcare equity researcher. But I'm also here as an immigrant, and last week was actually my family's 12 years in Canada. And since then, I've helped immigrants in Etobicoke to find their food in. I've led local efforts for health promotion, and I founded a community group for youth to discuss local issues. All these to say that I am firmly rooted in Etobicoke. And so today, I'm here to show that my work in the front lines of health, my lived experience, and local impact in the community makes me the best candidate for the interim councillor. I also have a deeper commitment to municipal issues like health efforts for COVID vaccine equity in racialized groups, accessible transit for places that are further from the city core, and affordable housing to reduce the rising cost of living for people. And I look forward to working with all of you here on these issues. Now, for some experiences that I bring that would add immense value to council. I am informing public health policy for the cities most vulnerable as a healthcare equity researcher at St. Michael's Hospital. I'm shedding light on how the pandemic worsened the health of people reentering community from prisons, and some of them were homeless. It was hard for them to get help because many health and community services went virtual or shut down completely. And so I care about good public policy. At Wellesley Institute, which is a research and policy think tank, I led grassroots efforts to improve education and health for youth in suburban areas. So it shouldn't come as a surprise that when I say that I care about youth. Etobicoke North, as some of us may know, it's a bit of a sprawling neighborhood, and connecting regularly with local folks, it can be hard if you don't have a car. But this made me to co-found a group for young people to meet up, discuss, and propose solutions to local issues. At Toronto Metropolitan University, formerly Ryerson, I worked with barber shops, small businesses, and churches in Etobicoke and around the city to raise awareness about HIV in Black communities. And I realized through this that sometimes as public servants or policymakers, we've just got to take the message to where the people are and listen to them. And if it means going to the streets, to local shops, or to places of worship, then we've got to take it there. And some people that I met while out in the streets and in the local shops, they lived in Toronto community housing. I worked on housing. I led consultations with Black tenants at Jamestown and at Kingsview Village, which led to the creation of the Centre for Advancing the Interest of Black People. And I can say that I'm immensely proud that in this little way, I helped make public housing a little more livable, a little less stigmatized, but more importantly, equitable for the tenants there, which is why I believe, council, that representation matters. And so if I'm appointed, I'm going to bring my voice as a first-generation immigrant and as a Black person to council. I remember speaking a while ago with some Black fathers at Ujima House, which is a community centre for racialized dads, and they shared with me, well, they shared with me their joys of fatherhood, but also the fears that they had about raising their kids on the impact racism would have in their lives. And so with stories like these that I would pull from to work together with council on equity-driven projects. I also worked with the Board of Health to ensure COVID vaccine equity in racialized groups. I'm going to bring my experience as a policy analyst with Health Canada here. While I was there, I pulled forward recommendations to policymakers to improve the tracking for adverse drug reactions in the general public. And so, council, I'm asking for your vote today. Etobicoke North has given me so, so, so much, and I want to give back so I can deepen my impact in the community through public service. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councillor Pletcher.
Yes, thank you so much for coming today and putting your name forward. I would just ask if, should you not be successful today, would you consider, sorry, I can't see through your head mic, would you consider putting your name in for agencies, or boards, or commissions where your experience and your knowledge and your abilities in the new term, if you don't run there, consider putting your name in, in that way, to be considered as a board member somewhere?
Of course, of course. One that I'm actually looking forward to is Regisdale Community Health Centre. I'm proud to say that myself and actually two generations of my family have been clients there, so I'll look forward to joining the board there.
I think that's a provincial board, not a city.
Oh, it's not? Okay.
Yeah, but great.
Oh, I'm down for any suggestions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next candidate? Okay, you have five minutes.
Good afternoon. Mayor Torrey, city council members, and esteemed candidates for Etobicoke North Ward One. My name's Elliot Roberts, and I am grateful and pleased to announce my candidacy for the vacant city council position in Etobicoke North. Ward One. I have lived in and around Ward One all my life, and I would be honored to serve the people and the community in this public office. To give you a bit of background, I attended Don Bosco High School. I am a York U grad. I've studied around the world, in England. I have come back to the city and to the ward that has given so much to me. I'm not ashamed to say I knew Rob Ford, Doug Ford, who have served this council greatly in their time here. I've had interactions with Michael Thompson, who is part of this council, through the Jamal McGlore Foundation, which helps needy kids in and around this city. And I am still proud to be a part of this community. And I just wanted to speak from the heart. Throughout my 15-year career as a legal professional, I have always remembered to give back to this community, in particular to its constituents. For many years, I have volunteered my time as youth mentor and soccer coach within the area, and I have distinct knowledge of the concerns and issues of the community directly from the people who live in Etobicoke North. It is a diverse community. It is a vibrant community, yet it is a community that is in desperate need of social assistance. Business investment, revitalization, public support, and I represent it as speaks to the needs of the ward and its proud constituents. I served as a coach for the Toronto Strikers and Western Wolves, who are based in Etobicoke North for over 10 years. So I've had distinct knowledge from the parents and from the student body within the ward. And let me say, they are proud of their community, but they know much more can be done there. For too long, this ward has suffered through high rates of unemployment, leading to a disproportionate amount of poverty, homelessness, food insecurity, and high youth dropout rates, leading to a high rate of crime and gang-related activity in proportion to the rest of the city of Toronto, especially since the pandemic. For many years, pre and post-pandemic, these ills have not been tackled in any substantial way by previous Ward One City Council representatives. It is time, high time, that someone takes a stand and lay the foundation for a better tomorrow for this great ward while working within this interim role. The stark reality is, food bank usage is up, the size of waiting lists for social housing is up, rent, bank loans and grants issued are up, shelter and overnight services use is up distinctly since the pandemic, and the numbers of murders, assaults, robberies, and auto thefts are up. This is one of the hotbeds of activity in terms of the recent carjacking crisis that has gripped this city. Now, some say the ward is rife with hopelessists. Some say it cannot be saved. I say this is not the case. This area has a vibrant business community, and it must be enhanced with further private investment in order to improve the circumstances of the residents of this great community. Further youth, sport initiatives must be increased in order to give our young people a shot at a better future and an alternative to gang culture and the negative stigma and end that I pray never befall the youth in the community. The community must have an advocate, and I will push for provincial funding to improve public housing, infrastructure, and public projects that will back further employment within the Etobicoke North. Finally, despite my finite term of office, I would like to hear from the community advocates as to their suggestions for improving the future of Etobicoke North. This is an important post that is being vied for and accomplished, and I do this in memory of Gerald Hagley, who died of gang violence, and I vowed to serve this city and this constituency with valor.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Rose, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Torrey, Speaker Nunezada, members of council, city staff, and members of the public. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today. My name is Rose Milchin. Some of you also know me as Rose Burrows. I'm a resident of Etobicoke. I'm married, and I'm a mom, a proud mom of an incredible 13-year-old. I've been a public servant for 40 years with the provincial and municipal levels of government. At the municipal level, I've combined political and divisional experience. From 1989 to 2004, I worked in the political realm. I began with former Metro Toronto, and I continued with the amalgamated city of Toronto. From 1989 to 1996, I worked for the Metro chairman. Following that, I was the EA to various North Etobicoke members of council. From 1996 until amalgamation, it was Lois Griffin. Then it proceeded to councillor Elizabeth Brown and Suzanne Hall prior to amalgamation. I did a brief stint with the city of Mississauga, at which time I was the EA to the Ward Five councillor, and then worked for a bit in Mayor McCallion's office. From 2004 until the end of April this year, I have held progressive roles with Municipal Licensing and Standards Division. I started as a bylaw enforcement officer, then supervisor, and the last eight years I spent as manager of the Central West District, and the last four years was the manager of the citywide noise team. Being a public servant is an honorable vocation and a very rewarding job. Serving the public has brought me a great deal of pride and satisfaction over the past four decades. Today, I'm here to express my interest in the interim Ward One councillor vacancy. For the record, I have no intention of running in the upcoming municipal election. If successful, I see my role as one as a foster mom to the Ward One constituents. My priority is to serve and assist the residents of Ward One until the new permanent councillor is elected in the fall. My 40-year accomplishment is being a public servant and my excellent customer service reputation. I have a strong work ethic, and I'm dedicated and committed to serve the public and serve the public well. I've spent the last 33 years serving the residents of the city, city council, and working closely with city staff, and this has consistently been my number-one priority in every role that I have held. I've acquired and maintained partnerships throughout the city of Toronto with other levels of government, enforcement agencies, licensees, and of course, the general public. They say it takes a village to raise a child. Well, similarly, I believe it takes partnerships to sustain a diverse and vibrant community such as Ward One. In Ward One specifically, I have fostered partnerships with Toronto Police, the AGCO, the Greater Toronto Airport Authority, local community, residence groups, and local businesses. I've been a member of the 23 Division CPLC for many, many years. If successful, I believe I could hit the ground running, as I'm very familiar with Ward One and also with the city of Toronto and city council's policy and procedures. As the interim representative for Ward One, my priority over the next three months would be to pick up where the former councillor, now minister, left off, to continue to ensure that the residents of Ward One are well-served and have access to the services they need and require. So I hope I can count on your support, and I thank you very much again for the opportunity.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Do we have any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Next is Ian McDonald.
I was told that I could have a PowerPoint presentation, that I could hook it up, but I don't know how to do it. Does anybody here know how?
Okay, are you ready, Mr. Ian?
I'm getting it. Just a second.
Okay, just a sec.
Okay, ready to go.
Okay, you have five minutes.
The reason I am here today is, in 2017, I formed an association called CASA to stop condo developers intent on destroying the Columbus Centre's 10 acres of green space. It was a beautiful 10-acre site, as you can see here. This is one of our rallies, Yomolos Mike Cole was front and center in there. Mike was an example to me, showed me how things work and how we could get things done. The people that supported me in this association were the 4,000 Columbus Centre members, the 1,000 elderly residents in the senior citizens' homes that surrounded it, and the homeowners surrounding the site. This is, finally, after two years of effort, we got official historical recognition achieved, which stopped the development. You notice myself, Mike Cole, and the mayor were part of this. Councillor Cole showed me the importance of municipal governments. As I understand it, councillors ensure that the needs and wishes of the citizens in their wards are brought to the attention of city council and other bodies, and councillors create and act... And councillors create an atmosphere that encourages the establishment and growth of businesses in the ward. I am an author and a publisher. I write books and podcasts and art and so on. These are a few of my publications. A lot of them in investments, also novels, podcasts. And then I get into the selling of my paintings and so on. The Woodbine Racetrack is going to be putting 25,000 residential units into the 600, I think 648 acres of land that they have there. The total population of the ward is, I believe, 120,000. That's going to be a great impact on the community. Also, there's a new Costco Plaza, Dusington and Rexdale Boulevard, with 18 stores going in, 50,000 square meters of land. The Metro Links is going to terminate just north of the Woodbine, I mean, just north of the Woodbine Racetrack. What I should have, there's one slide in here that I missed. I've got an extensive business background. I graduated from McMaster University, but have been president of various companies, vice president. I'm a commercial risk specialist with many, many years of experience in it, which I think could be of great benefit to the city. I've lived 40 years in Etobicoke, and I would very much appreciate an opportunity to help the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next candidate is Patience Evagru. Sorry if I didn't pronounce your name correctly.
Do you mind if I get your sense connecting with each of my as well? Sorry, Madam Speaker, I just want to connect my laptop as well. Yeah.
Okay, you have five minutes.
Is it connect, I don't think it's connected to the screen as of yet. Okay, perfect. Good afternoon, members of council, Madam Speaker, members of the public. My name is Patience Evagru. Not a, maybe a familiar face to some on council. I want to start off by first and foremost playing a video that I think is very important. With the fact that residents of this ward are not here, I really want to feel their presence. This video is really, you know, special to me, and I'll explain why after the video. So I'll start off with the first video. I titled it "The Youth Are The Future." Give me a second. I tell you, you're the best. The youth, the youth are the future. I'll now proceed on playing the second video. These videos were taken in the Rexdale community. Now, as I mentioned, that video was taken in the Rexdale community. And the reason why I played it is because I think the, you know, the video is self-explanatory. When I say the youth of the future, the youth said the future is now. And that's a huge fact. And I read, the reason why I played this video is because, quite frankly, you know, there's two youth in that video who, a brother and a father, were lost as a victim to gun violence in this area. I wanted them to feel heard. I wanted them to know that their future is our priority. And I'm pretty sure we all share that perspective when it comes to the, you know, the youth and the future here in the city of Toronto. I also want to just quickly start off by giving a few quotes from the residents who are watching online. I went out to the ward and I asked, "What do you guys want to see in somebody who is brought into council?" And I'll quote them. "If we aren't able to elect, we at least want someone who has been here for our abandoned community." And they said, "You should run." Someone else said, "I hope people that are running are not afraid of talking about issues that trigger trauma. We need someone who will do the corporate and inner-community work." Another said, "Seeing a black woman represent our area was a huge statement. I felt like we could talk to someone who understands." That didn't last long. You talk about diversity, Patience, we need that. Diversity even in understanding, that is the only way our community will be attended to and thoroughly represented. I come here today, council, because I have a very clear vision for this ward. I do understand that this is a caretaking position. I understand that the days are numbered in this position. So for me, when I think of a candidate who's best for this position, I think of someone who has a vision. Sometimes it's not just about your qualifications. It's about what you take pride in. It's about what you can do. I'm happy to say that I've done many things in this community. You know, every year, about four times in a year, we go into different parts of this community, Etobicoke Ward North. And what we do is, you know, we, as you can see in the video, I try to mentally empower the youth. We also give back financially. When I say "we," I'm talking about myself and my amazing partners. We, you know, we sit down and have community meetings. That is what community is about. This is all unpaid. Since 2017, I've been a supportive voice to Toronto City Council. I've sat down in various committees, whether it be the executive committee, the infrastructure environment, the Board of Health, I've been here. I've been lending my voice just, you know, to add on to the amazing things that you guys here discuss here in city council. But I have to say this one thing. Representation does matter. Diverse representation matters. I hate to play the race card, if I have to be honest with you, but I do have to be with you at the same exact time. In a ward that's so culturally diverse, for solutions to come about, we need someone who is not afraid of challenging the status quo. Somebody who, like, in the quote, "is not afraid to enter communities and have those conversations." That's my vision. I could talk about all the things that I've done. I can talk about all the organizations I've worked for. There are many, believe me. But if there's one thing I want you all to remember, I know I have quite some short time. I want it to be that there's a vision. A vision that I plan to amplify, not just the moment, if I am appointed, I am appointed, and not just when it's done, but something that'll be amplified, you know, even going towards the next councillor. I want to work with the next councillor, with the research, with the community involvement, with the community development that I've continued to do, that I will continue to amplify, and ensure that whoever is being elected next is quite rooted in the community, just like I have been. There's so much more I can say. Time will not permit me. But if there's one thing that I hope that you guys take from this, it's that diverse, we say in Canada, diversity is our strength. But how diverse are we? How diverse is our economy? How diverse are our committees? And how diverse is our council? This matters when electing somebody. It matters for representation. It matters so that people can really be able to feel comfortable. People can really be able to see the potential of their ward. It starts by having people who are able to come out of the comfort zone and talk to the people that they are honestly intimidated by. And I hate to say it, it's not that I'm saying the whole of the city of Toronto is intimidated by you. Yes, Madam Speaker, I'm not saying that the whole city of Toronto is intimidated by council, but it makes a lot of sense when there's someone in council that can really relate to those that are left out of the picture. Thank you very much, council, and I look forward to hearing your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you. Next candidate is John Gensler. John, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, fellow candidates. My name is John Gensler. As I stated last time, my main focus will, over the next few years, because I'm running this fall, will be delivering budgets that will help people get through these inflationary times. But a second issue has come up, which is going to be very important to me. With all due respect to the mayor who's opposing the strong mayor proposal from Premier Ford, the minister was on Metro Morning last Thursday to lay out the government's reasoning for his proposal. The minister expressed his government's concerns that this council is not getting enough shovels in the ground fast enough. Economic factors will play an important part in how many shovels go into the ground over the next few years, especially if we don't manage the soft landing and we do go into recession. So that's a little bit debatable. I'm 100% in favor of responsible development, primarily because it broadens the tax base, which is going to de, or decrease the taxes for people. So the minister also gave a laundry list of cities, which Toronto is, according to him, falling behind. He mentioned Chicago and Paris. Well, anybody who watched 60 Minutes last night, the profile of Chicago is not one we want to copy. And Paris, the ongoing protests there, year in and year out, make the Ottawa truckers look like peaceniks. More importantly, though, to me, is the city he left off the list. Flint, Michigan, where strong powers were used to force through a change in the city's water supply and eliminate corrosion controls for a few bucks. And we know what that did to the people of Flint. It's close to my heart because I got to know a lot of people in Flint because my stepson was playing for the London Knights and the Mississauga Steelheads. So we went to a lot of Flint Firebird games. Those people are great people, and they deserve better. And we're not immune. We had our own preventable tragedy in Walkerton not too long ago. I'm just going to read some of Judge Dennis O'Connor's inquiry into the Walkerton tragedy. Judge Dennis O'Connor examined the events and delineated the causes of the outbreak, including the provincial government. The MOE noted significant concerns two years before the outbreak. The inquiry concluded that budgetary restrictions introduced by the provincial government four years before the outbreak were enacted with no assessment of risk to human health. The ministers and the cabinet had received warnings about serious risks. Budgetary cuts destroyed the checks and balances that were necessary to ensure municipal water safety. And further, it says, "Many Canadians wonder, 'How could this have happened in a developed nation like Canada?'" An unfortunate set of largely preventable circumstances culminated in disaster. The most important lesson remains that the many layers that are put in place to protect health cannot be peeled away without serious consequences. And if we let the strong mayor proposal go through, we're going to cut those cords of accountability, which could lead to that type of disaster again. Now, many callers have said on the talk shows, you know, with Mayor Tory, it might be okay. Somebody who's willing to work with people, be conciliatory, discuss things rationally. But we may not always have a Mayor Tory sitting in that chair. So, and one thing I can say, I have been before the people of Etobicoke before. 6,544 of them voted for me in the 1985 provincial election. And just to close on a positive note, I've had the opportunity to watch the shelter in Liberty Village for the last few weeks. Excellent job on that shelter. The residents, the people using it seem to be having, enjoying it and using it. All the residents seem to be going around, going about their business, jogging and going to the cafes and everything. So, and the stadiums being used well. So, very well done on that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next candidate is Michael Jackson. Is there Michael Jackson? No, okay. Dean Maher. Okay, Dean, you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. So first of all, good afternoon, councillors and Mayor Tory. Thank you for providing me the time to speak. I am Dean Maher, a proven community leader and member of the LGBT community with a strong business background. And I'm asking for your support for the interim appointment. First and foremost, why am I putting my name forward for Ward 1? I'm doing so because an interim councillor appointment will be an excellent opportunity for me to combine my decades-plus of community and volunteer work with my business background. I will work for the residents of Ward 1 and support the two remaining office staff as well. I will use the experience from the appointment to help guide me toward a new career with a community focus after the appointment term ends. I'm telling you this because I believe in honesty and transparency and essentially, essentially in government. We should be, that should be our first, our first focus point. As a caretaker city councillor for Ward 1, I will prepare the office for the smooth transition to the newly-elected councillor and increase staffing. For staffing, I've already reached out to the city clerk's office and asked for hire, and asked about hiring. The city clerk's office replied that they could assist me. The response is in the email that I sent last week and in today's agenda. If appointed, I will contact the city clerk's office today and begin that process. Although this is a caretaker position, with three and a half months remaining in this council term, there is much work that needs to be done, such as monitoring the COVID crisis and preparing for anything that happens in the fall. Other things that I would do as a councillor, I'm just thinking of out loud, is make sure that all queries are answered within a reasonable time. Do things such as helping neighbors resolve issues by mediation. And I also want to help the two remaining office staff, Trent and Brian, explore their career options. Because like all of your staff, you know, their terms are coming to an end pretty soon. And I want to help them explore other options in other areas of the city if they want to stay with the city or even speak to the new councillor to see if they want to, you know, work with them. You have 21 candidates before you for this appointment today. I believe I'm the most qualified for the interim appointment, especially my dedication to engaging the communities and people. My community work focused on creating, developing, leading, and maintaining events and groups. I was a driving force behind most of my community accomplishments. I was not asked to do these things. I made it happen and engaged the community to work with me to make all these endeavors successful. Some of these accomplishments are: Founder and past president of the City Place Residents Association, which was later incorporated into a not-for-profit corporation in the province of Ontario; Founder of the Fort York Neighborhood Association; Founding coordinator, facilitator to bring together local businesses to create a steering committee so the City Place Fort York BIA could be created. I've also had many leadership roles in volunteerism, such as the past president, sorry, the past vice president and director of the Toronto Humane Society; Chair and panel member of the Toronto East Shore Community Preservation Panel; and I was even appointed member of the Community Mervish Gary Working Group. There is still much more, including my work experience that I've put on my LinkedIn hyperlink in the email that I sent to everybody. I know one of the candidates for this appointment worked for the city of Toronto extensively, known by many of you, and retired in April 2022. That's only been three and a half months. And if appointed, I think it's important to find out which you'd be receiving, a city pension and a paycheck. I think it's important to disclose this information. I will have the city clerk guide and advise me and discuss extra staffing. Their office also told me they have resumes on file that we could use. In my email to the, to your offices, I also posted on today's agenda. I've also provided you with endorsements from prominent people. I've also provided you with endorsements from prominent people I have done community collaborations with. My social media accounts for vetting. I've explained why I'm running for the appointment and gave examples of the things I believe that I would be doing as a councillor. I provided a Toronto Police Criminal Background Check, and I have a plan. That plan being speak to the city clerk about staffing and using them for guidance and advice on policies and procedures, respond to residents in a timely manner, help Ward 1's office staff with career options after the October 24th election, and prepare the office the newly-elected Ward 1 councillor. I believe I'm the most qualified candidate for the appointment, and I'm the only one who has presented a plan so far.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Next candidate is Mo Jiwa.
Okay. Is my video on? Okay.
Okay, you have five minutes.
Respected councillors, Mr. Mayor, fellow candidates and residents, let me start by asking, what makes a great community? What makes a wonderful city to live in? What allows a city to thrive? Well, a great city is based on its residents and its leadership. It's also about how residents participate and how they engage in their local government and access its services. It's about the services and programs that the city implements and offers to its residents. It's about how residents participate and how councillors and the mayor and the staff offer programs and services. It's a partnership. It's a combination. The answer is both simple and complex. Dear councillors and dear mayor, it is an honour to be here to seek your endorsement to represent Ward 1 until the October municipal election. This afternoon, you're going to be presented with several fine and talented candidates. So please allow me to explain why I should be your selection. First, I know Etobicoke and Etobicoke North very well. I grew up in Etobicoke. I have lived in Etobicoke North for over 20 years. I know the retail outlets, the traffic patterns, the various restaurants, the neighborhoods, libraries, places of worship, community centers, and several other. I know the different cultures, the languages spoken, the faiths, and its needs. The size of Etobicoke North and its challenges. Why should you select me? I am also knowledgeable about our city and the other wards that comprise Toronto. The person you select will also be the person who you will work with for the next three months, communicate with, engage with in both meetings at council and in committees. By selecting me, you will bring forth a person who is knowledgeable, respectful, caring, a creative problem solver, a sincere listener, compassionate, understanding of the context and background of a situation. As a councillor, I realize that we're here to advocate and care for our ward, the residents, the physical and social infrastructure, the businesses and offices in our ward, but we're also here to look at the overall interest and development of Toronto. It is indeed a balancing act. Whether the issue is affordable and quality housing, which is needed in Ward 1 and across the city, access to comfortable transit, economic development, public health, the environment, energy, water, parks and recreation, community programs, better and cost-effective waste management and recycling systems, the list goes on. Such components are important aspects of the city. By selecting me, you are selecting someone who is knowledgeable about the various issues in our city and wards. I'm someone who understands the complexities, interests, and perspective of the various stakeholders in Etobicoke North and the city. I'm somebody who will collaborate, cooperate, and serve the citizens and residents in Etobicoke North. How did I develop my knowledge and experience and understanding of Ward 1 and our wonderful city? Well, as I mentioned earlier, I'm an active resident of Etobicoke North. As an educator, I've taught in Etobicoke and attended events and workshops in Etobicoke North. I've served families and students in Etobicoke. I was on the board of directors of the Rexdale Community Health Centre for six years and two years as a volunteer. I was the chair for one year, an experience which is a highlight for me and a contribution I am proud of. My experience at the Rexdale Health Community Centre raised my awareness of the health services, both physical and mental services, health services, that some families, youth, and seniors in Etobicoke North rely on. It helped me understand and appreciate the kinds of services and programs we should support in Etobicoke North, as well as across the city, especially neighborhoods that need them. I learned and witnessed the seniors program, the cooking program, youth, dietary services, assistance with Wheel Trans applications, the youth pathway programs that open possibilities for students to enter higher education via scholarships, along with tutoring and mentoring support. I also served on the board of directors for the Albion Neighbourhood Services for six years.
Can you please wrap, can you, can you wrap it up, please? Thank you.
Yes. The experience reinforced my understanding of programs and services residents depend on with a focus on youth and after-school programs. I also served on the city's 3R Committee, formerly known as the CIAT Committee, Community Environmental Assessment Team. So, dear councillors and mayor, I'm ready to collaborate, I'm ready to work cooperatively, and I appreciate your endorsement for the vacancy in Ward 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, thank you. Next candidate is Walter Alvarez Bardas. Okay, you have five minutes.
Okay. Hello, council and mayor. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk to you directly and address you directly. It's an honour. But I want to take a second to thank my fellow candidates, because they're all amazing people, and it takes a lot of courage to put your name forward as a candidate in any form, and you councillors probably know how hard it is, right? So my recognition to them. Now, I'll start a little different because I'm of Afro-Indigenous ancestry, Latino. So I'm going to start by telling you a little story. The story is of a little child that grew up in the middle of a brutal war, surrounded by violence with bullets flying above his head. And in the middle of all this fear, this child was loved by the parents so much that they would shelter him from looking at the violence around him and instilling him the desire of finding a better place and to continue educating himself. That child is me. I am here as what I call an improbable journey that happened to me. The fact that I can be here, having grown up in abject poverty, surrounded by that brutal violence that I was telling you about, and now I'm here before you. I achieved some successes, as you probably read. Despite my learning disabilities, I reached the apex of academia, being the recipient of multiple scholarships, including doctoral entrance scholarship, top of my class in my MBA. But one thing that I wanted to tell you on that regard is that how I achieved getting to the top of my class as an MBA was not by imposing my ideas on others, but recognizing with humility that I don't have a monopoly on good ideas. Good ideas come from all sides of the political spectrum, and that's how I did it, and that's how I intend to conduct myself should you honor me with your vote. And professionally, I'm a civil servant with many years of experience as a civil servant, and I'm also a volunteer champion in many ways, inspiring people with learning disabilities such as mine around the world, reaching places as distant as Africa, for example, but also locally, building houses for refugees through Habitat for Humanity or caring for cancer patients that do not have health insurance. So I've succeeded, but that's not a reflection on my greatness. Quite the contrary, the greatness belongs to the compassion and the love that the city gave me. That's how I was able to be lifted up, from being homeless and hungry on the streets of Toronto to being here before you, not as a guest, but as a family member. So in my opinion, I've already seen that promised land of love here in Toronto, and brings me to why I want to serve. I want to serve because this love in my heart that I feel for the people that helped me when I was on the streets of Toronto, to help me reach what I am today, including the LGBTQ community, that when I was hungry and homeless, they showed me where to go. If I was hungry, they told me where the food shelters were. So this love, I want to repay it. And it's not because it's a dream or because it's a job, it's because as per Aristotelian philosophy, it is the highest honour there is. And if you honor me with your vote, rest assured that I will lead, I will execute the office of councillor for the little time that's left with hard work but with honour, with the humility to put aside my ego, if there is any, and recognize that this is not about me, it's about the people in Toronto. And I would be very motivated to work with all the people that have inspired me here today, starting with Mayor John Tory, who we're ideologically opposites, but I'm so proud that he's the mayor of this city. He represents us so well on the international stage. But at the other side of the political ideology, councillor Leighton, wherever he's sitting, I met your father, and he changed my life in such a profound manner because he taught me that it is possible to be a compassionate, beautiful human being and be a successful politician at the same time. Or councillor Mackelby helping people during the pandemic. So I want to be a part of this team and work with you, with the humility to learn, but first and foremost, my message is of love and of honour. I will serve them with honour if you give me your vote, and if not, I'll pull for the success of whoever you select. God bless you, God bless Toronto.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, our next candidate.
Our next candidate is Samuel Duraisingham. Samuel, are you connected to the meeting? If so, this is time to turn your camera on. Madam Speaker, I don't see the candidate has turned on his camera, so I suggest you go on to the next candidate.
Go to the next candidate.
We'll call Samuel again at the end.
Our next candidate.
Sorry, Madam Speaker, our next candidate is Alistair Courtney.
Good afternoon.
You have five minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon to Mayor Tory, to the speaker, Ms. Nunez Yata, and to your councillors and to the fellow candidates at hand. My name is Alistair Courtney, and just to give you a little background about myself, I grew up in Etobicoke, in the ghetto, coming from East Mall, starting from Capri Road to East Mall, and then my mom moving us to Brampton. But we had family that was in Etobicoke North. I've had friends that have died, been in gun violence and all that sort of stuff. So me being who I am and being part of the LGBTQ, going through the struggle of being through trauma, as other candidates have said, and to understand what it is to sit on a desk and to know, to hear people's values and to hear people's stories and to understand how to help them out the best way they can is a part of this position. And I must say that many qualified people are here, but what we need more is people that are of normal statured, that can listen, that can hear people's voices, that are admired by what we have done in the community. Being part of a church that could have maybe turned their back on you is a part of my struggle that I have lived to live with, but yet still we are here strong as ever because we can just survive a new day. And I can see that with Etobicoke North, there's a lot of struggle going on that needs to be addressed. It's not just to hear people and just to think you're going to help them out, it's to actually help them and to show them that you are concerned about what they are going through and how you are here to help them in the best way, shape, and form. We can sit here and we do different things on a daily basis, and we think we help people, but when it comes to Etobicoke North, I was always told that this place could never be helped. But it can be helped if the right person is put in there to acknowledge people, to give them a chance to speak, to be heard, to have a space where they can say whatever it is. As my dear friend said, people are traumatized, big time. And the only way they can get over this is to maybe have somebody who's been also traumatized. I will say this right here in public, I've been molested, I didn't know I was molested until the age of 16. But it's stronger, we can be stronger from that. And being turned away from the church because of my sexuality is a hard thing that I still have to deal with. But I hope that hearing my voice today, you are giving me the chance to be a voice to other people that don't have that voice at this present time and moment, especially when it comes to churches that don't listen. They preach the gospel, but they don't preach love. And love is my key thing, that we should love one another no matter where we come from. I grew up going to Michael Parish St. Joseph, the activity of our Lord, where I was given the opportunity to be with other cultures, all different cultures, not just my own, where I could look at where people may not know other cultures, they may not be open up to even try somebody else's food. That's a key thing where I think is important in our daily life, especially being here from Toronto, being a multicultural city which I grew upon. I'm born 1980, where things were presented to us a different way than how it's being presented now, and I feel that I am the person that can open the door to many things that have not been opened to, and I hope that I'm given the chance. I will be running in this ward when the elections do come because it is a ward that needs to be addressed and needs to be looked at more often than what other wards are out there. And I hope that you give me the opportunity to get that to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have questions? Okay, thank you very much. Next candidate.
Speaker, the next candidate is Davin Chu Narang.
Okay, you have five minutes.
Madam Speaker, Mayor Tory, councillors and friends, I am an Etobicoke North resident, a first-generation immigrant, an engineer by education with decades of corporate and business experience, including running small and large companies as CEO. I have worked in five countries and managed a workforce of up to 6,500 and revenue of up to $170 million. I was also selected as one among the top 75 immigrants to Canada in 2012. In Canada, I have been deeply involved in voluntary community work and have been the past president of Niagara in Keepers' Association, past chair of the ACTRA AAB Council, and past vice president and director of a large condo board in downtown Toronto. I'm an actor, an author, an activist, writer, columnist for various media agencies, and through my written and spoken word, I have been standing up to fight discrimination and hate in any form for more than a decade. And that is the reason I'm seeking this opportunity to serve Etobicoke residents as their councillor. Yes, I am also a candidate for the upcoming election on October 24th. But the past three months of campaigning has But the past three months of campaigning has made me accept the basic fact that with no political contacts or masters, no financial resources, and against a political heavyweight as good as incumbent, my chances of getting elected are miniscule and will exist only in my dreams. Yet I go door knocking every day as it is important to spread my ideas and democracy is also about losing, but with grace. This today is my only realistic chance in the near horizon to serve Etobicoke North residents as their councillor and provide efficient service. While running small businesses in Canada and being an activist, I have faced my more than fair share of hate and racism, including physical assaults. Yet I raise the issue mainly through my columns. But one reason that I decided to take a step forward and become a candidate for city council was when last year in the heart of Etobicoke North, I saw a sick gentleman of my son's age being brutally abused by a racist customer, including being called a terrorist just because he was wearing a turban and had a beard. I had to emerge out of the bystanders, face the bully and bring an end to that ordeal. That very moment, I knew that I have to come out and speak strongly for the muted. And it is absolutely wrong, absolutely wrong to blame just one community for this as the virus is widespread amongst all and we display racist tendencies towards each other in different degrees. This exists because of past prejudices, mistrust, and is regularly fueled by divisive interests. The best remedy is representation. And that is why it would be a very positive message to the entire city from this council, especially today when Indo-Canadians celebrate the 75th Independence Day of India by giving us a chance to a South Asian voice, which despite being the largest visible minority in Toronto, has had practically no representation in the city council ever. In Etobicoke North, close to 30% population, 30%, almost one in three are South Asians. My multilingual skills in four languages and deep understanding and close contact with many cultures enable me to be the true voice of everyone and not just one community. And I can act as a strong bridge between the residents and the city staff. In my door-to-door campaign, I have heard lots of problems related to roads, parks and housing maintenance. I want to work with the residents and the city staff to solve as many issues as possible. I've also heard stories of pain. I met a Somali Canadian lady whose son was shot dead in the parking lot in a apartment building and have shed tears with her over her loss. No city staff, police or politician ever visited her when she most needed our compassion and support. If selected, I want to go to her house this very week and tell her that she is not alone and that a brother from the city stands by her in her times of distress. A Latin American Canadian, almost blind, seeking dignified existence, an African Canadian lady trying to make peace with rodents and decay, there are tens of residents I have met in the last three months who need assistance. I will work to ensure that the residents feel reassured and know that we care. Representation matters. Empathy, experience, expertise and skills matter equally. I bring them all together, rolled in one giant package of 200 pounds, topping with energy, zeal, passion and proven leadership skills. A vote for me will be a vote for the bright future of Toronto. Amen.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next candidate.
Speaker, the next candidate is Denise Walcott.
Okay, you have five minutes.
Thank you, um, thank you Chair, Mayor Tory, members of council. I am back again, um, talking, um, asking for the opportunity to make my case on why I should be interim. And I have a few reasons why I would be a great fit. I love being a part of a great diversity. Um, as I said the last time, I have experience in both corporate and entrepreneurship environment which gives me insight to different perspectives, um, of the people, of the people in the Toronto community. I have volunteered in Toronto community with charities, on boards, charities like the 416 Community Support Women, Scott Mitchin. I'm always committed into serving my community and I know, I know I'll be a great caretaker for this interim role and I'm committed to providing a smooth, um, a smooth transition to the next duly appointed councillor in Ward One. Um, I'm going to work with the, you know, I'm going to work with the people that are in the community as well, because it's not just me alone. I feel like there's very strong heads in the community that some have spoken already who work with some of the charities and some of the people in that community. So I'll be working with them and making sure that they're being taken care of. I will work to continue the excellent communication with residents and keep the office running smoothly. My main priority is Ward One until the next duly appointed councillor comes in. And that's it. Oh, that's really short, sorry guys.
Thank, thank you. Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Speaker, our next candidate is Kim King.
Okay, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Tory, Madam Speaker, members of council and my fellow Torontonians. My name is Kim King and I was born and raised in Rexdale, better known as North Etobicoke. I grew up at a peak of changing times, from the abundance of fruit trees to the wave of diversity in peoples from all over the world, to the accommodating culture that makes North Etobicoke a family, a family that I call home. I remember before there was a no-frills, there was something called Lob-Laws. And before we had a Walmart, we had Rexdale Plaza. And that JJ Mugs at Woodbine Centre and Scooters Roller World at Albion in 27 were places where families went to hang out. One of the reasons that I can appreciate North Etobicoke is for its ability to lend a helping hand to one another, like the 2003 blackout and the 2013 floods. Neighbors came out to create an amazing mosaic. Etobicoke truly has become a gateway to the most multicultural city in the world, better known as Toronto. So how do I know this? Well, because I've been there and I am here. I feel that I am best qualified to fill this position for the interim council because of the body of work that I've done within the community. I sit on the executive board for the 23 Division Community Police Liaison Committee and the North Etobicoke Santa Claus Parade. I participated in the Eye Impact Hearings, bringing police and youth in the city of Toronto together to discuss the hard issues. I'm on the executive board for the Advocates for Etobicoke Youth and Seniors, where we put together for over a decade, children's Christmas parties, seniors' Thanksgiving lunches and youth bursaries for outstanding achievement. My past affiliations also include Pathways to Education, North Albion, sorry, Albion Neighborhood Services and Trust 15. Under the late councillor Pam McCollum, I participated in the Poverty Reduction Strategy. I sat as a voting executive member of the Federation of Metro Tenants Association for the city of Toronto and by the extension represented my Toronto housing complex at the time, back when they were known as CHU's, representing CHU One in Ward One. Currently, I hold the position in public service as a food bank coordinator in the Rexdale area. And like City Pulse, better known as City News these days, I seem to be everywhere. So if so appointed, my objectives are not to divert from the previous agenda, but to maintain and enhance and touch more lives until the next councillor is elected. I would like the opportunity to gain more experience and represent the city that I love. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Dr. LaRose for coming out and supporting me today.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Our next candidate.
Our next candidate is Candice Schluter, who I believe is participating remotely. Madam Speaker, through you to Candice if she is connected to the meeting, if she could turn on her microphone and her camera, this is the time to do so.
Okay, we'll go to the next candidate.
All right. The next candidate is Jacinta Kanakaratnam.
Okay, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Speaker Nunziata. Hello, members of council and Mayor Tory. A special thanks to city staff for coordinating this process. My name is Jacinta. I'm an award-winning community developer, skilled board member and skilled in consultation and stakeholder relationships. I will try to make this as brief as possible. Um, I know you've been all sitting through a whole afternoon of meetings. Um, I'm going to just outline four specific areas why I'm going to describe why I am the best candidate for this role. Understanding the assignment, I understand this is a caretaker role to keep the lights on and for business continuity. The ward has gone without a councillor for months now. I will ensure the elected councillor transitions into the role seamlessly. Almost no learning curve exists for me regarding processes and the analysis of data. I express sound judgment and political acuity. As an engaged constituent myself, I call 311, I call my councillor when I seek change or explanations. As such, I know constituents want answers and not templated ones. Folks want to feel heard. My goal is to respond to constituents' communications as soon as possible. I'm a previous renter, current homeowner, transit taker, driver, pedestrian, a working class citizen, a ratepayer, and I understand their concerns and my aim is to represent the constituents properly. Merit and diversity coexisting, simply put, city council does not appear to reflect the population of the city it is supposed to represent. Appointing someone who merely appears as a person of color is not the solution, that is tokenism. Rather, someone like myself who has a proven track record of achievement and integrity is a recipe for success. Lack of diversity on city council or within public appointments can breed cynicism and apathy in community development and civic engagement. We are seeing that this year within the election. Quick reminder for those running for reelection, constituents are watching how you vote today. My lived experience in Ward One, I lived in Etobicoke for several years before moving this year and this is what I know. Ward One constituents are resilient. However, whether heading up Albion Road to the lush community space at Roundtree Park or the deer sightings at Humber Gate Park, there is beauty in Ward One unseen to many. There are vibrant communities and some of the best food. While studying at the University of Guelph Rexdale campus while completing my double degree diploma in justice studies, particularly during this 2005 Summer of the Gun, I gained a unique insight into Ward One. This kickstarted my passion for community development. I possess an intimate understanding of the complex issues the ward faces and the need for someone reflective of the constituents' demographics to connect with at the council level. I sponsor the Rexdale Women's Centre where I also used to manage provincial funding and compliance for domestic violence programming. I'm an active member of Ward One in the community by connecting with people weekly, donating to nonprofits and supporting local businesses. The analysis of myself versus other applicants, the majority of the applicants here have tried for any and every ward appointment by election, general election. Most applicants have tried to campaigns at all levels of government and failed. This expresses opportunistic grab. Most have not been to the neighborhood or even spoken to folks in Ward One. If the ward constituents do not want these folks as representatives, why would council entertain voting them in even on an interim basis? I admire municipal politics because I am nonpartisan. I do not participate in any party politics. I have no affiliation with any previous councillors, nor am I related to any councillors present or previous. I possess superior understanding of what perceived and real conflict of interest is. I am certain I have the best combination of formal education and career experience, Ward One lived experience and tactical skills for the role compared to any other applicant. I do not wish to fill this role for the idea of power or clout or money. Experience and giving back are my only motivation. Proving that, I am committing that if I am appointed today, a portion of the proceeds of my salary will be provided back under the Donate TO or Ward One specific initiatives. Evidence of my skills, competencies and pertinent achievements that set me apart, and you might already have this information in your materials, a Bachelor of Applied Science degree from University of Guelph, Law and Security Diploma, Humber College, coursework at McGill Executive Institute, Member of Financial Management Institute. My governance roles include previously sitting on the board of the West Scarborough Legal Aid Clinic and currently I sit on several co-op boards within Options for Home, the only nonprofit developer working for affordable housing within the city right now. My tireless work has been recognized by such awards as the Law Award from the Notable Young Professionals Network, the Certificate of Appreciation and Outstanding Performance from the West Scarborough Legal Clinic, a Certificate of Recognition of Contribution to Canada's Successful Pluralism and Enthusiasm for Community Service from the Prime Minister, Honorable Stephen Harper, 2013. I currently am a Senior Planning Advisor in Finance Procurement and Planning. So I hope you all consider me for the appointment today based on those facts that I have laid out.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next candidate.
The next candidate is Alison Canning. Who I believe is participating remotely.
You are correct. Can you hear me and see me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me and see me okay? Okay, perfect.
Please proceed.
Hey, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much. Few years ago around this time, I worked with the Kingsview Village Westway Community, which is where I currently live in North Etobicoke, to host a back-to-school supplies drive. And it was there where I first met a young female grade 10 youth who also lived in North Etobicoke. She volunteered to help assort the supply drives. This youth was respectful, kind, bright, a rising track star who attended one senior Percy Johnson in Rexdale, which is where my son currently attends, and had dreams to be a nurse. She was raised in a single-parent household and helped care for her younger sibling. And I do remember this kid, this youth had an impact on me. As we sorted the supplies, I learned that she did most of her schoolwork online through a phone like this, doing research, reading assignments, writing 800 to 1,000-word essays on this tiny device. Her family didn't have enough money for a computer. Expenses for housing, food, transportation, medicine, extracurricular activities, clothing all took priority. And in that moment, I asked myself, how does that phone set her up for success in school? How am I and how are we as a community helping her prep for post-secondary so she can pursue her dream as to become a nurse? And it was in that moment, I realized that computers are the new backpacks because this grade 10 student sadly was not alone. With the support of friends, volunteers, community partners and organizations, we have successfully distributed over 4,000 refurbished computers to those in need across the GTA, including North Etobicoke. And this youth story is far too common in North Etobicoke, which is one of the reasons why I'm running for city councillor for Ward One today. So good afternoon, Mayor Tory, Madam Chair, members of the council, staff, fellow candidates and guests. My name is Alison Canning and I'm a very proud resident of Ward One for the past 15 years. I'm here today to ask for your vote so I can humbly serve the people of North Etobicoke as their interim city councillor. I am running today because North Etobicoke is my home. And as you can see from my online portfolio, I'm invested in my community and will work hard to address our needs so that we can thrive and not simply survive. If elected, I will utilize my skills to build strong teams to better serve all residents for Ward One, starting with ensuring that people have access to basic needs like food, shelter, technology, safe communities and wellness services. I will foster and encourage innovation and partnerships, bringing more support and resources to North Etobicoke frontline teams to help them better serve the community, with a goal to remove bare with a goal to remove barriers to higher education and increase employability for everyone. I will bring my leadership skills and experience on serving on committees to represent the strong voice of Ward One at council and work with fellow council members to access more funding, resources, and opportunities for North Etobicoke. And finally, I will utilize my negotiation skills and ensure that Ward One community receives the maximum employment, economic, and green benefits in all the major developments that are currently happening in Ward One, including the building of the LRT, Woodbine Entertainment Centre, and the future site of Costco and more. My 30 years of work experience with educational institutions at U of T and TMU, cultural centers like the Miles and Dell Jewish Community Center, and nonprofits Habitat for Humanity, Halton Mississauga has allowed me to acquire the necessary skills to be successful in the role of city councillor. Working on the frontline of these high-profile organizations has provided me with the experience to manage budgets, staff, work under intense pressure, deliver excellent customer service, and build strong teams in a diverse, multicultural, and multi-general environment. As an entrepreneur, I also started a nonprofit organization, Let's Get Together, that aims to make learning equitable and accessible. Members of the council, you have a very important decision to make today on behalf of Ward One. And my vision is that together, along with the candidates who have stepped up here today, we can help make North Etobicoke realize its full potential and see what I see, hear, and feel. And is that Ward One is a strong, vibrant, and dynamic community that's filled with worldly experience, hard-working individuals, and determination.
Thank you.
Please vote for me today, Alison Canning, as city councillor, Ward One. Thank you for listening.
Do we have any questions? Okay, our next candidate?
Our next candidate, Madam Speaker, is Abraham Abi.
Good afternoon, Chair.
You have five minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair, Mayor Torrey, and fellow councillors and fellow nominees. My name is Abraham Abi. I'll give you a small story about me. I came to Canada 1989, and I was given a place with my family at Regent Park. Apparently, people told me, why are you living here? And I gave them the answer, brighten the corner where you are. So I came in as an instrument technologist. I went to George Brown, I did community work. And then I went again and did PhD in Human Services Councillor. And we set up a program or set up, should I say, focus community to change Regent Park. I championed a cause of challenging councillors that to give Regent Park a new face, a new reputation to live up to. And they call me the Good Vibration. Apparently, I leave after finishing York University, I went to work in Wisconsin for some time and came back. I came to live in North Etobicoke. For 13 years, I've been part of the board of directors at Red Day Community. I work with Crisanti, who was once a councillor there. I work with Michael Ford. My virtue I bring here is metracy, pragmatism, and honesty. What happened in the past four years? There was a case about a woman who attacked a mayor man. And they stopped bringing the mail. What happened? I championed a cause again and wrote a letter. I have people sign, I brought it to city council, city hall here, that we have a security map to shadow the mayor man so they can bring the mails back. That program is enforced today. So I'm not just talking about voting for me. I'm talking about someone who can initiate or bring solution to problems that are enforced or problems that are, you know, in current situation. My, I have master's interdisciplinary studies from York University. I have the skills. I've been working with councillors who were there before. And I have the, should I say, the enthusiasm to bring solution to problems that are existing in North Etobicoke now. So I ask for your vote to continue what I'm working already at North Etobicoke. Not. I write letters for people who have problems with hydro. I write letters so that they can connect the hydro back for them, and it's working. So I'm not just talking about going to start any program, but I'm already doing the work that we are going to vote for someone who hasn't got the experience working in Etobicoke. So I ask you to vote for me because I'm the right person for the position. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Our next candidate?
Speaker, the next candidate is Christopher Noor.
Madam Speaker.
Okay, you have five minutes.
Your counsel. I know the architecture of City Hall. I know how the tree level of government work. I have been speaking to the people in this community since 2012, living here since. I know this community wants and need, and I will represent it into City Hall. I know the demographics of this ward, number one. That's why I believe in the decentralization of City Hall. So I'm saying today that we should go towards the people. That's why I'm saying is that city council, sometime we should sometime walk around the ward. And sometime when I talk to the people in Etobicoke, one of them will say, hey, I only see the council here around election time. So I'm suggesting that sometime, you know, walk around the ward, listen, get back some feedback. So my main idea today and my concept today is community mobile bus. We will first advertise that we will be in the area, time, and location. Then take the service from Panama Court and other to the communities. Accessing parents to grants, subsidies, information on mental health, legal help, housing, women help, access to jobs, transportation, mobile hell, uh, bus, sorry, to pools, baseball, basketball, hockey, food bank mobile bus, library bus, toy drive at Christmas time, performance in politics, and feedback from the community. Number two, ward concerns. Some people are just sitting around Albion Mall. You would go there for years, and they would just sit there all day, nothing to do. And this has been going on for years. Number two, Kensington Smith Building. Make this, make this a gated community with a caretaker, which means to say just one entrance at the front. The only time the police and the media report crime here to this, to the public is when someone dies. If they are screening people to live in these buildings, it should be properly supervised. Other issue in this ward, carjacking, food price up, rent too high, apartment AC issue, single mothers. Next, businesses. Businesses affected by the COVID Rogers outage, LRT construction, and gas prices up. James Town and Mount Olive. People keep moving from these two neighborhoods, which affect and have a ripple effect on the attendance of the school. Number three, city budget. 14.99 billion dollars 2022. More transparency, more accountability. And I know, I know we were affected by COVID, but things could have been worse, right? So I'm thinking about revenue tools. Open Toronto for more businesses, and all entrepreneurs are welcome. Toronto is ranked as the most, 14 most richest city in the world in network of 944 billion. More budget, more budget watchdog, more budget whistleblower. Allocation of funds, who gets what and when? More money to housing, shelter, rehab, mental health supply, support rather. 3-1-1, mental health hotline. TTC, billion dollars in debt. Go to the federal government, freeze the CEO pay. And finally, lower the senior bus fare to $1. I reiterate, lower the senior fare to $1. Number four, transit. LRT 2022 should continue to Woodbine Entertainment Hub, which will be housing 60,000 people. Next, special service for special need services, school buses, and TTC. Change the schedule time on the bus, for the buses in response to the LRT construction. Basically, if you have construction there, work on the schedule that, okay? The buses will come 10 minutes earlier or leave 10 minutes earlier from Kipling subway or Finch subway. Temporary bus shelter at Albion Finch West. LRT construction area. Every morning on my way to work, I would see these people at Albion Road. And they would be standing in the cold, minus 30 degrees. No bus shelter. So I am proposing that Metrolinks will supply them with temporary bus shelter.
Hey, can you please wrap it up? You have five minutes.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I want to ask you one question. When will you be bringing the pothole bliss to Etobicoke now?
Okay. Do you want to wrap it up, please?
Uh-uh. Wow, my time is gone. Okay, I'll wrap it up. I'll wrap it up, Madam Speaker.
Thank you.
In conclusion.
Do we have any, do we have any questions?
I'm just going to wrap it up, please. Yeah, just, no, just please, please. Conclusion.
Okay, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Clerk, I believe that at this point, to ensure that all candidates have had the opportunity to address city council, the city clerk will call the names of the candidates who have not spoken yet in the event they may have joined the meeting.
Madam Speaker, there were two candidates. Michael Jackson is the first. Is Michael Jackson present in the chamber? Seeing not, the second candidate was Candace Schluter, who is, was to appear virtually. And I do not see Candace Schluter turning on her camera or turning on her microphone. So, Madam Speaker, that concludes our list of candidates today.
Okay. Thank you. Do any members of council wish to speak at this time? Please put your name under request to speak. Okay. Members of council, I will now ask the city clerk to instruct you on the balloting process.
We will now proceed to the balloting for the appointment to the office of councillor for Ward One at Etobicoke North. Councillor will use, council will use the same hybrid balloting procedures it used for previous appointments. Procedures are outlined in the report before council. Once balloting begins, members must remain in their location, either in the chamber or remotely. All members of council will vote by ballot. Members who are present in the chamber will be issued a paper ballot. Members who are participating remotely will be placed in a video conference breakout room one at a time in alphabetical order. And members will be asked to consent to me casting their vote by proxy. Members will then instruct me on how to mark their paper ballot. Once all the members present at the meeting have cast their ballot, I will advise the speaker to call for a brief recess so that we may tally the results. Once the meeting resumes, I'll advise council of the results. If the candidate who receives the greatest number of votes receives the votes of more than one half of the number of members of council present and voting, I will declare the candidate to be appointed. If the nominee with the most votes does not receive the votes of the majority of members present, council will conduct another round of voting. The next ballot will exclude the nominees with the fewest votes and any nominee with no votes. Balloting will continue in this way until a candidate receives the most votes. The candidate receiving the most votes also receives the majority of votes. And of course, if only two nominees remain and votes for the two remaining nominees are tied, I will select the appointment by drawing a name by lot. Members in the chamber, please mark your paper by placing an X to the right of the candidate of your choice. Please mark it clearly and legibly. If I cannot determine your intention for any reason, including your handwriting, your ballot will be spoiled and not counted. Members, you may only vote for one candidate, of course. If you vote for more than one candidate, your ballot will be spoiled. All members present must vote. If you do not vote for a candidate, your ballot will also be spoiled. Now, secret ballots are prohibited by law. Members present in the chamber, you must print your name and sign your ballot in the space provided. If you do not print your name and sign your ballot, your ballot will be spoiled and your vote will not be counted. For those members participating remotely, I will print your name on the ballot, and I will sign the ballot having completed it on your instruction. Members in the chamber, when you're finished voting, please fold your ballot in half and place it on the ledge in front of your desk for collection. We will collect the ballots when all members have finished voting. So, members, the voting process is about to begin. We have a number of members participating remotely, so we'll ask for patience while we conduct the voting, and we'll start that process now. and we'll start that process now.
All those in favor, show a hand. Opposed, if any, carry it. Shall this bill be passed and declared as a bylaw? All those in favor, opposed, if any, carry it. Okay. May I have a motion to introduce a confirming bill? Moved by Councilor Carroll.
So moved, Madam Speaker.
You have to read it.
I'm not logged in either, sorry. There was such a long recess. Oh, thank you, Catherine. That Lee be granted to introduce a bill to confirm to the point of the introduction of this motion, the proceedings of City Council meeting 49 on August 15, 2022.
Shall Lee be granted to introduce this bill? All those in favor, show a hand. Opposed, if any, carry it. Shall this bill be passed and declared as a bylaw? All those in favor, opposed, if any, carry it. This special meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, the staff, members of council, and to all the candidates, and thank you to Rose Milchin. Congratulations.
Thank you, Speaker. Everybody have a good summer.